Being recorded and I would expect the Board of Supervisors and even Tammy, if she wants to give some opinions or ask some questions. We'll do it differently. And trust me, because I've been here before. I have, I've spoke with Boards in an open situation, open meeting, not being recorded, and we actually have a very, very good and productive session. You do what you want.
I don't know how we adjourn and then go back to budget because that's part of our regular meeting.
Are we in a regular meeting or are we?
We never fully adjourn.
We took a break for lunch, that's it.
So we're in regular meeting now.
Yes.
Never left, except for lunch. So Doug, this is the same thing you had given us previously?
That is correct.
Okay, yeah.
The items that are highlighted in yellow, I cannot, I need to verify. I questioned some of that. And Cassup County is correct, I know that. So just to give you an idea of what other secondary road departments are reporting as far as their health insurance, premiums, contributions, deductibles, and percentages that they are paying there. And if you need any other information from this, feel free to ask.
Did you look at one of Baker's family premiums?
I looked at the other night.
At a thousand and two thousand?
Yeah, thirty-two thousand for premium. Twenty percent of that would be paid for by the employees, so twenty percent of, what's that, six, seven thousand?
So, six thousand four hundred. Thirty-five hundred-ish.
Yeah, sixty-five hundred, almost sixty-six hundred. Oh, we talked about the school previously, I believe. Ryan Goodman sent us all the texts about Elbona School was paying five fifty a month for family plans, I believe. So that would, I mean, you divide that by twelve, that's five forty-eight, so that's very similar.
And I was going to tell it out to the other day and that's not where he told me what they paid. Said they paid like ten percent of the family, now they got ninety-five percent down.
You're saying he told you the employee paid ten percent?
Paid ninety.
The county paid ten. The county paid ten and the employee paid ninety?
That's what he told me, but I don't think he knew what his money was again.
Could have been. Yes, I've, I've seen all this stuff before since it's the same page, are we? Is there any questions or anything on that for Doug?
About insurance?
Yeah, with insurance. Otherwise, I guess we can explain the, talk through the paper that was passed out, which was our resolution from last fall. This is part of the reason our fund balances are lower than we were projecting and believe we were projecting, what, one point seven million for general? Before, um, this amendment, um, on ten-three of twenty-three was over five hundred thousand dollars. A fair bit of it was ARPA, um, funds, but since those were sitting in our bank account at the time, so to speak, it dropped that down. So, things that potentially should have been considered previously, but but that is a major piece of the fund balance situation, so wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that.
When you do a budget amendment of five hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna affect your budget and your fund balance.
So I guess there's nothing for action on that and we can keep rolling, but people need to be aware of that. I guess at the end of the day, what's the Board's desires for making changes? Or not making changes? I mean, it was Doug's point earlier and I will agree, we, we need to set a tone of what we're doing here, a dollar amount we're targeting, what priorities are, whatever. We need to have some answers so that we can find where the dollars are within those goals.
You're talking about this year's budget coming here, budget?
Budget moving forward for next fiscal year, yep, twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five. I guess I'll say, to some degree, I think raising taxes in a limited fashion is
Part of life.
Yeah, part, part of life, I mean, with our expenses going up for for our expenses of purchasing things from other companies, vendors, um, all those sort of components. I, I think that's, that's gonna have to be part of the equation, but I think we need to look at the reduction of a million dollars for us. So that's where I'm at, but
That was the minimum figure in my mind.
Eleven employees-ish.
Or a combination of multiple things, but at the end of the day, that's my dollar figure.
If you're gonna do any type of a layoff of anyone, it's not gonna be just, you can't just say, well, we'll do a combination of, we're not gonna mow ditches and then we need three people laid off and then just pick three, like it doesn't work that way, you either do it or you don't. So I, I would much rather, I mean, much rather prefer to change health insurance than fire employees, but like employees, go excuse me, but, but, uh, well, I guess I'm curious to know what, what Doug has here too, as far as options.
What's the rest of the Board thoughts?
We had six hundred thousand less in the annuals in the next budget that we didn't pay to save.
No, that was the year before.
Right.
That's the budget we're in now.
We stepped all that too.
There's, there's plenty of pieces of the budget that, yeah, I mean, we can, we can go through everything and compare it to four years ago if you want, um, and the numbers are there, but we still need a target. I guess Josh and Roger, you guys were less supportive of making changes to health insurance, so what other solutions do you have in mind?
Another little hitter marked in just expenditures, but I think that's part of what we need to look at is just expenditures themselves on the departments. I don't know.
Where do you want to start?
Supervisors. IT. They all, you aren't gonna get much out of anybody.
No?
You can trim some. But you're not gonna make your million dollars.
No, we won't.
If you take away, make them pay family enforcement and health insurance and don't give raises, I don't know how somebody that's making fifty thousand a year can pay fifteen thousand in health insurance.
Even the worst case scenario that was talked about earlier, it was not fifteen, it was twelve, but that's, that's the difference between single and family, that's not necessarily what we have to do, but, um, that's the difference between the premiums right now.
Probably another month.
What?
Twelve hundred dollars a month difference.
If they take that one, that's, that's why we were talking about other options.
Yep.
If they want the premium plan, that's, that's there.
Which is where, uh, high deductible plan with a lower cost of premium could come in and save money. If that's what we paid for, the employee could choose to buy up their coverage.
I know if I had to pay three, four, or five hundred dollars a month, whatever it is for a family plan, I wouldn't, I'd go with a different policy. Because I have other options. So, that's
I kind of disagree with him, too many options, because I'll go back to the ones that are gonna keep your good coverage, the ones that have issues and you're gonna reset costs exponentially, and the ones that go to the high deductible are usually the healthy ones.
So the way, and I don't know if this is picture perfect right or not, but one of the things, like to put it in maybe simpler terms, um, was the difference between PPO Network and HMO is, one of the big differences is the rates that the insurance company pays the provider. And the PPO Network is a national network, so it's based on national averages of cost. HMO is, say Iowa specific or region specific, and they look at what the cost for providing that service is in that area, so the reimbursement rates are lower, which means the insurance company pays out less money, which means we pay out less money in turn. So those effects stack on themselves and that's just trying to simplify it down, I don't know if that's perfectly accurate or not, but
We're taking advantage of that already.
We're not.
Well, we get a cut rate.
We are on the PPO Network, which is their Cadillac Plan. That's the best network they have.
It doesn't matter what we do, they get benefit from, from the plan that we're under.
The employees get the benefit of a plan that we're under, yes. But I know at one point Michelle said they, they underwrite both plans based off of the expenditures and like the usage of the plan with the most, I don't know if it's most policies or most population or whatever, but the highest used plan is what they base their numbers off of and then they do their formulas to calculate that back out to the other one and figure out their costs, but, um, it, it's just a piece of the puzzle, I guess, it's another tool to lower, lower expenses. But if we're, if we're not looking at lowering that as an expense in our budget, we gotta find something else.
So I'm gonna say, we asked Doug to be here twelve-thirty, so let's, uh, let's hear what he has, I'm sure he has other things he can do too.
Well, if we're not gonna get any feedback from the Board, I guess we need to move on some way. So Doug, do you have any, um, suggestions or ideas on ways we could term expenses in secondary road budget?
Yeah, first thing, I guess, the, uh, the actual budget of the road department, just keep this in mind. Uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, it was, uh, ten million, seven hundred sixty-six thousand plus four million, one hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. So about fifteen million dollars. The budget we're in today, the budget year, we're budgeted twelve million, nine hundred two thousand in uh, service area seven and two million, eight hundred sixty-seven thousand in capital projects. So the budget year that we're in right now is at fifteen million as well. The budget year that is set for fiscal year twenty-five, the road department is ten million, three hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars, uh, for service area seven. That's, uh, over two million dollars less than what it is in the current year, and it's two million dollars for capital projects. So secondary roads budgeted expenditures have been reduced quite a bit. Now, having said that, there are things that can happen, but the Board has to be on this. I am not going to say this is how we're going to do it.
Right.
Yep.
I talked about roadside mowing. Um, I asked Lisa to get a report of the expenditures in roadside mowing for calendar year twenty-twenty-three. That came up to be approximately, uh, eighty thousand dollars. Is what hours multiplied by their hourly rate. You add your FICA and your IFRS to that and you got whatever about ninety, uh, ninety-two, ninety-three thousand dollars. So if we would eliminate roadside mowing or reduce roadside mowing, we could save, I'm pretty sure, about a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars, maybe as much as a hundred and fifty thousand. But currently, we mow three to four times per year road shoulders. This would reduce the mowing to possibly just one time a year and possibly just in the fall where we mow for snow removals. So that would be quite a bit of a change to our road system. We could stop painting edge lines. Uh, that I'm estimating would be right in that hundred thousand to a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar change, edge lines on the side of the road. Uh, we started doing that, I suppose, about twenty years ago. Uh, the public, when we started doing that, the public was quite appreciative of it, I do remember that. Um, we could paint center line on a third of the county. Right now, we do it on half a county, so every, every two years the center lines get painted, we could do that every third year, that would save money. But again, people may, may not, maybe people will accept it. Uh, overtime, we could eliminate overtime. Again, Lisa ran a report, we had approximately one thousand two hundred fifty hours of overtime in the calendar year of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, multiply that by twenty-five, forty an hour and that's thirty-two thousand dollars. That's just the dollars, again, you would have IFRS and FICA that you would not pay on that, so you're talking about, uh, forty thousand dollar savings. Gravel roads, we talked a little bit about it, no construction on gravel roads, just letting things pretty much, uh, deteriorate to a point where we need to close bridges, we can keep things, uh, gravel roads maintained and all, but, uh, uh, by not doing anything there, we will definitely save, um, money. We have approximately two hundred fifty, uh, bridges. Uh, design life of fifty years on those bridges. If, if they're fifty years old, we should be replacing five every year. I don't know how many are on gravel roads, how many are on paved roads, say we have a third of our road system is, uh, is on the paved road system, that eliminates a lot of structures that we would not have to worry about. Create more Level B roads. Again, this is something that I'm sure Level B minimal maintenance, um, the Board would have to act on this, but we would, uh, we would not have to go out and maintain it, saving time of labor, saving time of equipment and saving material costs. I do not have an estimate of what every mile, what that would be, um, we could, we could go into that. Creating more no-snow removal roads. If we always run into this, we start putting up some no-snow removal sites and a person runs from his house here, two miles over to where he's got beds, and he uses one of those miles of road, um, he's gotta have it plowed. Um, we could just, you know, say, well, I'm sorry, we can't afford to plow it anymore, you're gonna have to drive around on snow removal roads. We could vacate roads, there's a lot of roads that can be vacated. The roads that cannot be vacated would be roads that people own in the middle of a mile, for example, if somebody owns an interior eighty-acre tract um, and would not have access, we would, it'd be difficult to maintain that. However, if four owners own corridor sections of land and there's a road there, they can access that from the other roads, they can access it. So vacating roads would be a possibility. We would be, again, we would eliminate the amount of, uh, roads that we have to maintain. We would, the right way would go back to the landowners, uh, they would be, uh, farming it, I make assumptions, and we would be able to do that. Charging for permits, we could charge for permits. We, right now, we get permits for tile under the road, uh, driveways, um, utilities, just to name a few, but we could put a charge on that and get some revenue on that. They all take time, uh, whether it's engineer's office time, whether it's our foreman, um, we would, uh, we would keep track of that and try to charge and get some money back from that. Uh, charge more for construction of driveways, drainage districts. Right now, if, uh, the road department receives a drainage district repair, uh, Foreman, I don't believe charges any hours to that drainage district repair. Although he does have time, usually has to run out, locate it, has to get a one call, locate on it, uh, has to organize. I don't know if we even charge for our men going to the drainage district repair, we just charge for their actual work. I think that we could charge for drainage district, more for drainage district repairs. Uh, road damage, right now, it's very difficult, um, and we would have to have cooperation from law enforcement, but if there is damage to roads and it's pretty clear who is doing that damage, we could charge them for that work. It would be something that the, like I say, the attorney's office, law enforcement, uh, the road department would all have to work together to get that taken care of. And then pavements, we could do a lot less, uh, maintenance work on pavements. That's one of those though, as you dig a deeper hole, it's harder to get out. So I, that would not be a recommendation mine, but those are just some things I've jotted over the last week and a half, uh, just jotted down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That hundred and sixty thousand doesn't solve the problem.
Oh, it'd be more than one sixty, the mowing and edge lines would be
Hundred and forty, hundred and forty.
Quarter million with mowing, edge lines, and overtime.
The rest of it is variable.
Yeah. What about a reduction in staff and changing territories?
If we reduce staff in the road department, we would definitely, um, have to limit, people would have to understand that snow removal operation is not gonna go the same way as what it does today.
You have fewer guys covering more territory and your road's not gonna get moved to city.
Yep. Well, maybe if we, if we did that, maybe we'd be able to buy a little time on the equipment because we'd have some spares in that regard and then be able to work things in a little slower.
Does that, what that mean? He said if we did the reducing staff.
How much does the road department contribute to your financial situation that you're in right now? I just spoke about expenses being reduced drastically in secondary roads over last fiscal year, current fiscal year and budget fiscal, budget year. I mean, we, we have, we have been reduced quite a bit.
I, I know the reductions in comparison to the current budget year and the previous have been discussed, but you go back to fiscal year twenty-one, total expenditures were eight and a half million. So we're, we're quite a ways above normal prior to the last two years.
So you're, you are blaming the road department for the current situation?
That's total, but to actually answer your question on the revenue side, that would be the only place we could impact things for the rest of our budget, which would be, um, the tax dollars and local option sales tax that goes into that. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe with what's plugged in has a million-dollar increase in taxes, total taxes going to the secondary road department. We, we changed some from property taxes to local option sales tax, but it was still the same net dollar. And then, um, when we talked about moving health insurance from rural to general supplemental, we offset that with tax dollars. But at the end of the day, the tax dollars going to roads purposes is still.
Can any of that be contributed to last year's budget decision by the board of supervisors? Can any of those increases, honestly speaking, can they be contributed to last year's action by the board of supervisors to secondary roads?
Yeah, your request for adding five hundred thousand dollars last year was not approved. So then you doubled up on it this year, just putting it bluntly.
And what did last year, that, what did that do balances in? So that forced, that forced money to be spent out of balances. And you can always spend money out of balances as long as you have a balance. So my point is, in the secondary road department, you have forced money to come out of a healthy balance to a point where we're at now. And next year is going to be more difficult than what this year is. So I'm offering in an effort over the next year to transition. I'm looking, trying to be a little proactive and begin this year on reducing expenses. I've offered some that I have. I will continue to offer.
Any thoughts?
Is there any equipment that you can get to stretch out an extra year? Maybe is there a possibility with that or?
It's been done. We, we have equipment that is, we have sterling trucks. We're not getting parts for it. We can't repair. We have caterpillar equipment that's going on twenty-five years old and it's getting twelve thousand, thirteen thousand hour, thirteen, yeah, thirteen thousand hours. The equipment that we run, we have good equipment, but it needs to be replaced. And equipment costs have gone up a lot since, what was it, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty? When you start looking at previous back, uh, budgets, you know, I think everybody understands that. Bridges that used to cost three hundred thousand dollars are costing seven hundred thousand dollars. Pavement that used to be a hundred and fifty thousand inch per mile is three hundred inch per mile. If you want to continue to play the game, you've gotta have enough revenue to play it.
Have you looked at options or considered changing, um, kind of the structure of how we operate and having crews like that just haul and then have others do maintenance with their blades? Having people stay in the same piece of equipment more?
I have not. Uh, uh, I, I don't understand what your question is. If we have, for the most part, operators have territories. And they haul their own material to the territory. They blade their own territory. And there's times during a week where maintaining gravel roads can happen. And there's times during a week or month where maintaining gravel roads will stir up coarse aggregate and start creating washboards when people accelerate and break. So we, in order to do that, I think we would have to have more employees. Right now, we are, our, our labor force is a labor force that's geared on removing snow. We're trying to be able to get that done in a day. Ideally speaking, a snowfall event, we can get paved roads and gravel roads done in a day. Get people out. And if you start looking at an alternate way of, if you start talking about reducing the number of employees in the secondary road department and dividing up duties, you're going to create situations where maintenance of gravel roads will be affected. Just we would not have enough employees to cover all that work.
Got any thoughts, Roger?
Well, you can't cut employees just out of the road department.
No, I didn't say that. Just that's what we're talking about now.
Yeah.
There's no real win-win to any of this at all. It's, it's either cut services to save tax dollars or you increase tax dollars to keep services. And I don't know. People are gonna have to understand, I mean, the increase of cost for everything is affecting everybody.
You do want to cut insurance costs. Tell me your plan, which weighs in. Hundred percent of family or?
What do you mean hundred percent of family?
Employee contribution.
Like the employee paying the difference?
Yeah.
Ideally, I would like to have numbers for high deductible plan and actually go from there. And I don't have them in front of me right now, but they, they should be at or below what our costs are right now for the plans we have, so they should be below that.
That's if ever, if enough people go to the high deductible plan.
Yep.
You can't guarantee that enough people are gonna go to that high deductible plan to make a difference.
You have to incentivize it with the HSA contribution. That's plain and simple. There has to be enough incentive there for people to switch.
I think it, it wouldn't have to be the only offer.
That could be an option too, but I don't know that that's the best for employees. I would rather let employees choose what coverage they want and how much they want to pay for.
You're talking incentivizing them going to a higher deductible plan, but you're also going to contribute to an HSA, which that money's still coming from somewhere.
Correct, but we would set our contribution on the front end. Say we're contributing X dollars to the total package for benefits for the employee. And then if you have option A, it might be single policy plus X for an HSA equals total. Then option B is family, maybe it all goes to premium, whatever. And then the difference they make up, it, it's all about how it's structured, but I guess that's the core of what I would be looking at. And if you have more options, it gives people the choice of whether they want a high deductible plan and an HSA or if they want the current plan we have and no HSA or a family policy versus a single. I mean, there's, the more options you have, the more choices they have and the more, more power they have in their situation.
But we're not saving any money right today.
You, you do if you affect the dollars, total dollars we contribute. That's the back end of the equation. But you gotta have the options up front to be able to give the employees flexibility.
Well, I'm just looking if you had them pay a hundred percent of the family, you're only gonna save a little over a million dollars. So you're talking about saving a million dollars, but then you're talking about giving them insurance. Tell me how you're gonna save a million dollars if you pay part of the insurance.
Here's just a dollar scenario. If, if we contributed a thousand dollars a month for every employee's healthcare coverage, we would save over a million dollars. They could choose if they wanted family or single plans, first off. Then they could choose if they wanted the current plan we have or a high deductible plan.
Or no plan at all.
Well, and if, if we could do that, that'd be a fifth option. I don't, I don't know the technicalities behind how that works out. If we can contribute to an HSA and they can pay premiums for a spouse's employer plan, I'd be fine with that. Because I think we'd have some employees that would take that. I, I don't, I don't know every detail of all of our options, but in principle, it would get everyone to the same playing field. It will allow them to make the choice on what fits their situation the best.
If you did a high deductible plan, would they, how much would they, they pay for that plan?
It depends on what we get for a price quote, so to speak, 'cause I don't have that. But it should be, the premium should be less than what our current plan is. So then the difference, like if we said a thousand was a total, if it was six, say six hundred bucks for single premium and twelve hundred for a family premium, if we contributed a thousand dollars, you could either have the four hundred a month, you'd have the premium plus four hundred a month in, in an HSA for single or you have two hundred dollars that you pay for family hypothetically. It's just.
They can pay the difference.
Yeah, you could, you could pay the difference. You could pick which plan fits. If, if you, if you could get it where we put that all into an HSA and they paid premiums at a spouse's employer, you'd have the same total dollars as a bottom line figure and.
And you'd do the same for people that didn't choose that high deductible? They'd pay the?
Yep, then, then you would have the same, you could have the same options that we currently have, which we have the prices for. You could have that dollars go towards premium and then the difference could be.
So they wouldn't be paying the whole premium? They'd be paying?
The difference. Yep. I mean, it's just a possible scenario. But yeah, at the end of the day, it, I guess I'm looking at it on what we are contributing and that's our dollars out the door. So having the options for the employees on the other side gives them the flexibility.
Either way, the employee's gonna have to start contributing something, is what you're saying.
Depending on which plan they chose, single policies could still be covered. And that would be my intention is that as the employer, we would still pay the single policy. So then you would, on the single side, you would have the difference between our current plan going towards a premium or the other plan with premium plus HSA and the difference would be the, or the total would be the same. And obviously, the family side, the prices would break out and you would still have the total contribution going towards their choice. But that's kind of where I had processed some options.
I'm following.
They would still have the benefit of being able to have insurance here. It's just who contributes for it and which package fits their needs the best. 'Cause some people, some people would choose the current policy, paying the difference or a single policy or whatever. They would choose that coverage. The next person may choose the other plan with a high deductible if they, they think they're healthy and not gonna need it and would have the desire to bank that HSA money. It, it's.
The problem is, is you're putting a insurance burden on the people that probably can least afford it 'cause they're the ones that have the family. Am I wrong?
But you got people like. Like Tom today said in the board, Tom Singh said, what he's done, thirty thousand dollars on.
Family insurance.
Family insurance. I mean, I, plenty of people have spent fifteen, twenty, twenty-five thousand on family insurance.
It's not, it's not just farmers that are paying that. You got employees at other companies. You got a lot of things that could be compared to.
I paid my own health insurance. I am self-employed.
I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, we can compare to the school all day long. We can compare to other counties all day long, but at the end of the day, our employees would not be the only ones paying for insurance. And whether, there, there's a lot of pieces to that puzzle, but.
Josh?
I just have a hard time, you know, putting more burden on the employees to start covering more of their health insurance without addressing wages. Or we can watch our roads go to. I know that's a whole nother option too, you know, I don't know. It's.
We can lay off a dozen employees and see where that works. I don't know that that's any better.
Well, I don't know that you would need to, you start having them contribute more of their. Well, I don't know that you would need to, you start having them contribute more of their pay to health insurance. I mean, not have to lay people off, because people may start looking another way, other places to work. Because that hundred percent is what's keeping some people here. We don't, we don't pay nowhere near as much as some of the other markets do. And that hundred percent of their family being covered is what keeps people here.
Right, Josh, we'd be more comfortable with the, with the market than the above market.
So that's why I would not be comfortable with making our employees contribute more to their health insurance without addressing wages. I was fine with zero percent on wages, knowing that, you know, we were going to keep the health insurance where it is. And that being part of their benefits. Now, I don't a hundred percent agree that the fact that, you know, single employees actually aren't benefiting as much as families because they are getting a significant amount from the county as a benefit. And when I look at that, I don't agree with the fairness of that.
I don't either.
What's fair?
Wow.
No, I mean, we had to adjust wage wages here in the courthouse for several employees so that they were paid the same as someone else doing that same job description. And that was on wages, but I I don't know how benefits can be left out of that equation.
How many employees you gonna lose to him if you change insurance?
She can't answer that.
In general. Think you'll lose any?
She can't answer that.
Yeah, that's not a fair question to ask anyone.
Well, you're asking that second question.
That's a little bit-
We're, we're here as board members, that that is our duty and responsibility to the employees, to the taxpayers, to everyone involved. That's our job. It's not her job, it's not Doug's job, it's not anyone else's job to answer that for us.
Well, you're right, we have a duty to the taxpayers, but we also need to remember they are employees, are taxpayers as well, and we need, we have a duty to them as well.
I agree with you. But where are we gonna meet in the middle? I mean, heck, let's use Winnebago and Elkhorn School as an example. We did the math earlier. Basically, both of them are having families pay five fifty for a family plan. That's not the whole difference, that's not twelve hundred a, a month, that's five fifty a month. Times the hundred, hundred employees that roughly that are on family plans, that's a half a million right there. Then it makes doing some things like mowing and overtime and edge lines, find a couple more things on top of that, then you're getting close to your million.
Well, you bring up the, the schools, you know, they, they contribute their insurance, their family insurance and stuff, but did the schools get wage increases? I haven't heard anywhere else that has gotten wage increases.
You could ask almost, probably almost any employee of school system if they feel they're overpaid, and none of them will say that they are.
And remember, they only pay, they only work eight months out of the year, nine months out of the year. They get their summers off.
And that's part of their contract and there's-
But I'm just saying, you're not comparing apples to apples.
You also look at, I mean, Brian Goodman that sent us all texts, I mean, I've had numerous conversations with him. He's, he's, I think he's said it publicly as well as privately, that having, just having the ability to be on a plan that good for that low of a price tag was still a huge benefit. It just, you're, you're not gonna be able to go on the open market and buy a family plan like we have currently for five hundred bucks a month. You can't do it. So wherever we set that split, obviously, that's the financial decision of it. But you can't go to the open market and buy a plan of this magnitude for that price tag.
For eight hundred and forty dollars for a single?
No, for five hundred bucks for a family, that I use as an example. That doesn't, that's, that's still the county making up part of the difference.
So what, what number did you put up?
What I was ju- What's that?
You said thirteen hundred a month for insurance.
What I was just talking about is if we had families contribute five hundred bucks a month for insurance.
Well, that's quite the difference than having them pay eleven hundred dollars a month.
It, any scenario within there is possible. It's the same structure at the end of the day. But five hundred bucks a month would get us, I'll say halfway there, then you throw a couple other pieces of the puzzle in together and we could get close to a million dollars or hit a million dollars. Gotta start somewhere.
I'm fine.
With what?
What you just said, that's what- Do what you wanna do. We gotta make a decision sometime.
Running department has in here so they can-
Just say you're gonna want to send an email out or something, I don't know. You better have other people here when you make a decision.
Well, we haven't really made a decision yet, and and even if we do-
I think they should be part of this.
But even, even if that's a option that's on the table, we still got another five hundred thousand to come up with. The options Doug laid out, we could maybe do quarter million.
Well, you can get rid of economic development, contingency funds and you'd be at just about a million.
Contingency funds aren't ongoing expenses, and the ongoing expenses are a problem.
Well, we're taxing, we're talking about taxing, so we taxed for. I'm talking about things that we taxed for, so.
How much the contingencies do we have choice on though, other than economic development?
Well, we got a contingency for the courthouse and we got a-
You talking discretionary?
Discretionary, is what he meant to say.
No, he made contingencies.
Oh, sure, yeah, I, why my mind is in discretionary.
There's contingencies for, like they always said, furnace all day.
I don't know if we have one in the IT division or not.
I don't know. It's top of my head, I don't think so.
I'm just, just saying.
But even if we cut mowing and overtime and edge lines for secondary road department, we still gotta offset that with transfers in.
You're not doing anything much difference.
But we would have to offset it a dozen before it does any impact.
The contingencies only amount to two hundred and one thousand. Something like that with discretionary. You got the civil defense budget still at a hundred and twenty-six, I didn't change that.
That was reduced seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five?
I guess one other thing I just thought of for secondary roads is, uh, we could stop doing any work for any other county departments as well. We do quite a bit of work for conservation.
Is that being charged out for hours and material?
No, we could just concentrate on roads and not concentrate, not have to do other stuff.
But is the current stuff being charged?
No.
All that should be.
We cooperate. For example, conservation, we'll have a safety meeting, we don't pay rent. However, we will truck aggregate to them, we'll purchase aggregate and we'll truck it to them. We scratch their back, they scratch ours. But if you wanna get down to it, we don't, snow removal with the courthouse. We could, uh, just concentrate on snow removal on the roads.
Any other ideas?
Oh, we're ready to cut capital projects now under fifty thousand. I don't know if you can take the whole capital projects like you have it.
In the courthouse? I thought I put that at zero.
It's on zero on my sheet. Went from forty thousand to zero.
I'm pretty sure-
I think he's talking to our department.
Roger, what budget are you in?
None department, I don't get any.
I guess, do we wanna get back into the health insurance stuff, or where do we wanna go? We got-
It's been a last wait a couple minutes till you get up here and the rest of them.
So we are ready to cut the funding for self-insurance down ten percent, correct? From what we worked on.
Yeah.
From the twenty-two, we're down to twelve.
It was twenty to ten.
Twenty to ten.
Was the rest of them? All, sorry. All right, nevermind, I don't know.
Well, now Josh is in here.
Couple of insurance, we're ready at fifty-nine percent. One hundred and forty thousand. So we're not even gonna fund that completely.
What are we talking about?
Josh?
I don't know.
I put some water.
One of the options we discussed was having, um, employees contribute five hundred dollars for a family policy, wouldn't be the whole difference between single and family, but it would be a chunk. There hasn't been any motion or anything made, but, um, that's one of the things we've discussed. You know, any more you guys wanna say on that?
You said family.
Yeah, for family.
And when would this take effect?
New fiscal year.
Is that per month or per year? Per month? Six thousand dollar pay cut for family?
No motions to make, yeah.
Yeah, there's.
But we got, we've really got three options here from discussions today, and the first option is uh, make changes to health insurance, the second option is let employees go, and the third option is let our services in the road department go to hell. I mean, that's, that's-
Ho, ho, ho.
No.
No, don't, this is talking about health insurance. Let's keep the road department out of this discussion.
I'm talking about trying to save money.
Yeah, but that doesn't, all these people right here do not, this is secondary road department. This is Cassuth County. Let's keep secondary roads out of this discussion. That's not an option. Let the roads go to hell, that's gonna help us with, with health insurance? What are you talking about?
Well, we're having a border discussion.
Well, let's talk about health insurance.
I think there's another option just to raise taxes. If we would've done that over the past four years, we would've been in this situation. Why is it always the employees that have to make up for a mistake that's happened over a four-year time period? Why should we keep taking pay cuts? No, no, no county around us got a zero percent raise except Cassuth County. So you can blame it on the state legislature, you can blame it on anybody you want to. Comes down to what happened here in Cassuth County and how we're gonna get out of it. And maybe we have to bite the bullet and and have a tax increase that we have done for several years, which ate up all our front balance, which put us in the situation we're in. I can't go tell my staff that were just hired six months ago that your deductible's going up, no pay raise for two years, and now you're gonna lose five hundred bucks a month on your paycheck. I won't have anybody left.
I also can't tell my staff that's been there for twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five years. By the way, you're not getting a raise, but you're also gonna start paying in on your family's insurance. I mean, I will lose staff and as we've said before, I do not get applicants, so what do I do when I'm open twenty-four seven? Holidays, nights, I have to cover it, so then who's gonna cover that? Because I'm, I will lose staff. Just throwing it out there. And I'm pretty sure we'll lose some deputies too, because you can go to the county over and make more than you make here.
Why was it okay to raise the taxes?
Why was it okay to raise the taxes when you guys were fixing this? And now all of a sudden few people complain and, oh God, we got to make changes now and it's got to come out of the employees. Why can't you guys just suck it up and say, yep, we made a mistake, we're raising the taxes, we'll do better next time? It was your decisions, not ours, but you want us to pay the price.
I don't, I don't think it's just a couple employees or a couple individuals out in the community.
You know, what you're taking, you're forgetting too, is my insurance, my personal stuff went up. I did come to you and ask for a raise because my personal stuff went up. I got to eat that already and now you're going to tack more on.
Our property insurance is going up too.
Exactly. So that's the cost of doing business like we discussed earlier.
In all reality, I, I would, I would like to have numbers for second option for high deductible plan. That way it wouldn't have to be that much directly out of pocket is the only option. But we don't have those numbers today right now either.
You're not going to, you're not going to solve the issue that we need million dollars plus to get the taxes down to what they were the year before? That's not going to solve the problem today.
Well, even a million dollar reduction in expenditure still has a seven hundred thousand dollar increase in taxes, so. Even the million that we were talking about shooting for doesn't completely balance everything else. Any other possible solutions or suggestions in regard to the budget from department heads?
Well, I think that we need direction from the board. What is your goal? Is it to provide the same amount of service as we do right now? Is that what you're trying to do? Is it limiting service? We need some direction.
If the board can agree on the direction, that's where we're at. Do you want to cut services?
That isn't what we're talking about. Okay, so what are, okay, we're going to cut services. What are the most important services? What is the primary service? I don't want to take over your meeting, but we, as department heads, need to know what you consider the most important, the least important. And we will start, I'm speaking, I don't know, I'll speak for the rest of the department heads. We will start addressing that and giving you options. I mean, I would hope. Our sheriff is not here, but speaking for Roger, speaking as a citizen of Kassuth County, law enforcement is a pretty good, pretty important service. Really, roads? Hell, that might be the lowest. The board might say, let them go to hell. We don't need to have any roads. People will figure out how to drive, take the good roads. They'll figure out how to get to the state road. Bridges fall in, we'll just take some barricades out there and close them off. Maybe that's the lowest. We shut the jail down that night and I had anybody there.
Wouldn't that be nice?
I mean, yeah. You know, ideally speaking, it would, it would be nice if everybody obeyed every rule. If everybody obeyed every rule, I don't, I haven't asked Sheriff Fisher that question. How many deputies would be needed if everybody obeyed every law? Everybody obeyed every rule? We could send all the jail, people in jail home at night. Our county attorney's not here. Sorry, are you tied?
I'm hiding. I was late.
If everybody would, would obey the law, your workload would be reduced a lot.
Would be down by thirty percent.
I mean, maybe the petty public should understand that the more they break the law, the more we need a county attorney. The more they break the law, the more we need law enforcement. The more they tear the hell out of the roads, we need the road department. Everybody wants less government until they need government. Then they want government. So please, if, if roads are a very, very low priority to this board supervisors, let me know. I will bring you more ways to reduce expenses. Give us priorities, give us advice, what you guys want, and then let us bring it back to you. Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to be able to do it in a manner that by Friday you'll have a new budget.
No, I don't, I don't know that that's possible either timeline, timeline wise.
Well, we cut the road department budget enough that it just barely meets the metrics, why would we cut it more?
Last year.
Well, this year is much better. If we cut, cut any other, it might not meet the metrics this year. I'm not that smart to figure it all out.
Have you ran calculations?
We will be okay as far as meeting local effort, but.
Do you know?
We are reducing, the expenditures in the road department this year are three million dollars less than what they were to current first of the year.
Do you?
The expenditures.
Did you say it's a three million dollar cut from last year?
From the budget year we're in right now. And yes, we need more property taxes, but again, when you take away balances and you use balances, if you want to give the same service, where do you get the money from? If you have a balance and you're taking the money out to provide the service, some, somewhere, there's not, as another wise man used to say, there's not a magic fairy that produces money. And my dad used to say that money doesn't grow on trees. So what do you expect?
Doug, do you have the dollar figure on what our local effort is required to meet the seventy-five percent?
I don't know what that has to do with health insurance and I'm sorry to put the question in that. Will you turn your papers and be sympathetic? Three million, two hundred twenty-six thousand, nine dollars and fifty cents is my calculation.
What was the last?
Three million, two hundred twenty-six thousand, nine dollars and fifty cents. Got a problem, you just have to pay the taxes and get those away.
So is your goal to get back to not raising taxes at all? Is that what I've heard you say?
No.
Very, very little? Isn't that what caused us to get in the position we are, not raising taxes for several years?
We spent the front balance down.
And we spent the front balance down. So why is, it's time, it's, it's a way of life. Taxes go up, cost of living goes up, everything goes up. If you haven't raised taxes for so many years, maybe it's time we have to take this big jump. The employees are going to have to accept it. Can't just keep hitting employees, hitting employees, hitting employees and expect them to stay around.
Todd, can I answer your question? General simple money levy went from a dollar thirty-three to two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Phil, to your point, this year, if we raise the taxes, it's like almost twenty percent or whatever it's going to be. Next year, there's still an issue that it's not going to balance without any cuts.
Right, so we cut all that this year, where are we going to be next year? The same, we're going to be right back here again.
Could be so far in the hole that you're not going to be able to dig out is my fear. If you get what I'm coming from.
And it'll all come back on us again?
Yes.
We have to stop the bleeding somehow and somehow we're going to pay the taxes and do it.
I don't want to, but. I don't think we got an easy choice.
I don't think any of us want to go through this again next year.
No, common sense tells me that we have to tax this year at the rate that we proposed. Suck it up and next year, we're going to have, they're going to have a hard time even coming close to doing this budget because we've got the front balance suspended down to the bottom. Unless everybody cuts near every department, doesn't spend it all, puts it back in the general basic, they're going to be in trouble with the next budget.
I guess our true goals for all those department heads is to be as frugal as we can and do the best job we can spending taxpayer dollars and try to put money back in the general funds. We're not in this situation next year. I mean, I put that back on us as a challenge for us to accomplish that and hopefully next year we can make things work better, but somehow we have to stop the bleeding. We can't just keep taking it out on, on everybody else.
The way I see it is there, there's really no win-win. I, I can't see, you know, giving zero percent wages and then start taking dollars from employees to cover for health insurance. I, I, I can't agree with that and I've stated that before. And I don't like the idea of raising taxes. That is, part of my beliefs is smaller government. But if we're going to protect the, the, you know, facilities and infrastructure that we have now, it's unfortunate, but we're going to probably have to do that. I don't like it at all, but.
So we got on board here.
Where's Jack?
Paying taxes? I know you want to cut taxes. Do you really think it's fair to the employees right now? Without any formal warning, making pay for insurance? I think there has to be a whole process to go through that. You're going to have to start next year in August, talking about it. And I know Kyle's not going to agree with me, but that's a long-term plan for an employee to take the five hundred dollar hit under wages.
We've got budgets too. And this, this kind of stuff's not added into our budget, so how are we supposed to afford it and not get a raise and everything else? I mean, you, you don't, you don't pay what I pay. You don't realize what I've done. I don't know what you do, but that's a kick in the pants. Especially on short notice.
One question I've got is if you're looking at doing that for each employee, what that tells me is to an extent, we have a say with our healthcare. If that's true, and I'm not going to apply this to anybody in this room but myself, then we should have the ability to opt out. If I can prove to the county that I have fair and equitable healthcare coverage.
You can waive your coverage anytime. You can waive your coverage. You don't have to accept the coverage.
It's not what I was told when I was hired.
Here's a little box on the application that says you can waive your insurance.
You can waive it, but you're not going to get a stipend.
That's fine.
To take their leave?
That's fine.
Over the past few months, we've talked about having two plan options. We've talked about four-way rates. Why should somebody that just has a husband and a wife pay five hundred bucks a month when somebody else has husband, wife, four or five kids and they pay the same amount? Let's get this done correctly instead of just trying to throw something up in there and hope it sticks.
I agree with what you said, Phil. I thought that was the foundational piece of moving forward with any of this, but the discussions, the discussions we had months ago went nowhere.
Well, we kind of decided to do nothing at that time, didn't we?
Well, and that was at the time that we had numbers that weren't accurate. And so, you know, when we were saying do nothing then, that was.
We did some, we raised our deductible, we raised.
Stop loss.
Stop loss.
Yeah.
So we did something. And I reported us guys sending all of our budgets. We thought we had done what was asked of us.
Well, I guess prior to you guys coming in, we did talk through some options with the secondary road department that we could reduce expenses and if we reduce those expenses, we'd have to reduce transfers to make it offset in our budget side of things. And Doug, you can tell me if any of these numbers are wrong, but I added up the transfers from general, from rural and local option, sales tax, and that's just over four million dollars. So if our seventy-five percent is three point two, I think we would have some room to come down on that and still maintain our local effort provisions. And I believe that was, I think you also did a calculation for our general property insurance. And I think last year's numbers, it came out to like a hundred and eighty thousand, if I remember correctly. And that's going up substantially, so we could have another two hundred thousand there that would be local effort. So I think we'd have about a million dollars worth of room to come down there if we make other changes to that budget in particular.
So you're going to balance, you're going to, you're going to solve this problem on shoulders of secondary roads?
I'm saying that's an option on the table.
Just let everyone know, please, if that's the case, that you are balancing this on the secondary roads and you will have to, you'll have to adjust expenditures on secondary roads as well. Because there's no, there's no balance to, you're, you're, you're reducing revenue on secondary roads, but there's no balance to take the secondary roads from. You can't operate negatively.
We'd have to reduce expenditures at the same pace.
Yeah, and you're going to balance the whole thing on secondary roads. Hell, last year, March, March third, twenty twenty-three, you all took it.
I think Phil's right in every department, as we move forward this year, just to make it a goal for everyone to squeeze as much as you can and... We've already...
I think squeezing is fine, but we need to know what you're wanting us to squeeze. You need to let us know what you want us to squeeze. I mean, I don't know that anybody's directly not trying to be conscientious.
I know you're not.
Yeah, they're trying not to be conscientious, so, I mean, I'll throw out, do you not want the Christmas program? I mean, I can eliminate the Christmas program. It can go somewhere. I mean, there's small things. My department's so small anymore. Now, I mean, I don't know how you're gonna eliminate not burials, but, I mean, so you're gonna, I don't think we have to do it today, but you're gonna have to have that discussion on what shall we not provide?
And I think the board needs to be a leader as well. I think that there's been dollars spent on legal fees, questionable dollars on legal fees over the last couple of years that may or may not produce results. We had a speaker. I don't know how much a speaker costs at the last safety meeting.
Twenty-five hundred, twenty-six hundred.
You know, is that, is that a needed expense? You're gonna balance the budget on the secondary roads, but we're gonna do all the rest of that stuff.
Instead of beginning, we should start with supervisor budget, which we're gonna cut. I don't wanna look at it.
And we did cut a lot of legal fees.
I think we've cut enough out of the road department. You think we're gonna catch hell over high taxes? You're gonna catch a lot more hell if you don't have any roads.
You guys got other solutions?
We're gonna have to quit spending any money that is necessary. Get the fund balance back up at the end of the year. Well, it's gonna determine that it's necessary or not. It's up to us, I guess.
Look at your claims. If you think there's something that's not appropriately being...
By the time it's on our claims, it's too late.
It's already there.
Needs to be decided before then.
Well, you gotta, yeah, you're correct. Everything that's spent should be decided on before it's spent, not afterwards. But anything large.
That's what the budget is, if we're approving dollars, that we're saying it's okay for you to spend this amount of dollars this year.
But we also assume that people do not spend money that's not needed, which is true.
Right.
And hope that there's some left at the end of the year for a balance.
I don't think there's gonna be any change to...
I haven't heard any suggestions.
I think we're stuck with the budget we got, yeah.
It's unfortunate. I don't like it, but frankly, I hate that we have to do it this way, but with the, how everything's going currently, if we don't, we're gonna be stuck even worse next year.
I guess if there's no solutions being presented, we're wasting our time sitting here, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn if that's the desire of the board. I'll ask again for any solutions or a motion to adjourn.
Do you wanna look at budgets or don't, or forget?
What have we been doing here the whole time?
Doing our insurance most of the time.
That's been one piece of the conversation.
Well, let's flip through our budget binders one more time altogether, and and if we don't have any other solutions after that, then we might as well, might as well adjourn, move on.
You guys want department heads to wait for all this, or?
It's up to them.
I don't wanna sit here in silence watching the clock roll by, so...
Yeah, I'll just remind you that the Iowa Department of Transportation Secondary Road Budget is required to be submitted April fifteenth. I have it completed. I'm getting the road construction program completed. I'm bringing it to you to be approved, so it can be turned in. I'm bringing it to you to be approved next Tuesday. When will you, or when do you anticipate having any type of budget decision made? And will any of it include the road department, secondary roads?
Today.
I'll just sit in here then.
Within the next hour, I hope.
Where do we wanna start?
Actually, we can start with the supervisor budget. That's, we're supposed to lead by example.
You wanna go line by line, or just talk about budget as a whole, or highlight things, or how you wanna go through it?
Start with the high-dollar items and work our way down, see if there's anything...
If we're gonna hit topics, let's just hit topics, otherwise, we can go line by line.
What is our general county management miscellaneous in three ninety-one there?
The wax, the wind towers?
No, wax is on...
Right about, right about one line up.
Uh, let me look. Do you want this stuff displayed, or are you okay with me just telling you?
Just tell.
That's fine.
The biggest one, I see that kind of development. Do you wanna keep that up or not?
Could be an option.
So that's ailers and cooney, labor relations, FEMA drainage consultant, Gatsby seventy-five. Taxes for different parcels, makes pays out of. So mostly attorney's fees.
We'll see attorney fees in there.
Oh, we looked at that. We spent less than ten thousand there.
Well, your sheets aren't up today.
Oh.
So those amounts in there have not been changed.
Oh, how much total do we have in that line item?
Hold on, let me go back to that. Three ninety-one, one forty thousand.
Well, yeah, so that didn't change.
We could probably change the mileage grade a little bit, because we've taken it up to something else.
No, we don't.
Well, we've only used thirty-two percent of it.
Yeah, but that's currently.
We're more than half the three a year.
Yeah, but I haven't turned in anything since last fiscal year. Anything.
Like since July?
Well, that for FEMA drainage just come out of that. Do you want me to change it or?
Change what?
Do you want me to change that line item or not?
The miscellaneous one? But we have attorney fees for CO2 pipeline and...
Those are separate lines.
They're separate things, so this is in addition to...
Yep, this is labor relations, FEMA, drainage. Um, so all of our ailers and cooney stuff for labor.
Okay, the FEMA, FEMA stuff will have some money for the category Z aspect of that project, which is admin costs. Um, some of that is already used up by, um, the engineering firms on the projects, but, um, some of that would potentially still be available.
And then Nick has some that go to taxes for certain parcels. I don't know what that is, Nick.
What's that?
Out of this general fund, three ninety-one object, says Cassius County Treasure Taxes Parcel. There's like a thousand dollars.
Is that for our farm?
What was that? Was that, uh...
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes. Yep.
Yeah, so we can't take that away.
That's about five, six thousand there.
Five thousand last year.
Yeah.
So you're not gonna pay tax on it?
Yeah.
I can think of well there.
Yeah, we can't, we can't reduce that line item.
Yep.
No. CO2 pipeline, I guess, is open for discussion. We got twenty-five thousand there.
I thought we lowered that.
Yeah, we, well, what do we have in there right now?
We lowered that to ten or something, ten or fifteen.
Three ninety-one, oh, one forty-eight?
We have five thousand in there.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
You can take the solar out for a year if you want, because that's ten thousand.
I thought we took that out, forty-nine.
I think it's five and five.
We put five in there.
You did?
Yeah, yeah.
We got old sheets.
Yeah, we haven't...
We got old sheets in there.
We haven't put new ones in, because we've no reason to place more paper.
Right.
Do away with animal bounties.
A drainage district should be paying less than animal bounties.
Huh? We wanna get rid of that? Six thousand.
So you're gonna have to make it out, we just did a traffic, we're gonna have to turn it in on drainage districts and not the road department.
Excuse me?
No.
When they turn in animal bounties on the road department, it comes out of supervisor's fund. When they turn it in on a drainage district, it comes out of...
If...
The drainage district.
If they catch it in an area of the county that's not in a district, it comes out of our budget right now.
So we can't take that out?
We could.
We could. Stop providing bounty for it.
They wouldn't get paid for anything on a river.
You could reduce it too. You wouldn't have to do it.
We would have to change our policy to not pay bounties. That's what we'd do.
What would we pay currently?
What?
What would we pay currently per?
Fifty.
Fifty bucks a tail?
Yeah. Reduce it to twenty, and we could drop it down to three thousand.
Well, I don't wanna reduce it anymore, because I wanted the trap out of the drainage districts.
Yeah, I'd leave the bounty where it's at, but we can get rid of it out of our budget, and just do it in the districts. We'll have to update our policy for that. You guys wanna do that? Okay, let's, Josh?
I guess, they're only trapped within drainage districts.
Only get paid.
Only get paid within drainage districts, I mean.
Okay, let's zero that out.
Are you, what's the CO2 litigation down to what?
Five. Otherwise...
Go down to a three-member board and save some money.
Anyone wanna, anyone wanna volunteer not take health insurance?
Yeah, if we didn't receive health insurance. But other than that, that's that, I'll hold it.
What department next?
Go through mine. I need to leave.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty, I need...
It'll be pretty quick.
I think we went through the attorneys a month before. He's sitting back there not saying anything.
I'm sorry, I, I...
We went through your budget and your work and salary.
Well, I think the, I mean, we did. I don't know there's any changes, but, you know, the idea is that that part-time position needs to increase substantially the revenue for collections, that we get a percent out. Um, so, I mean, I think it's, it's well-spent. Um, I think we'd be losing money if we didn't have that.
It justifies itself.
I think, and then some.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the other thing that I wanna bring to your attention is that I'm gonna be reimbursing the county on my private side for the, so that I can use the legal research, um, so that that will actually go down slightly. So, I mean, that's what my, the only area where I thought I could help out with this situation, so, because currently, it's just accounting things, so...
Yeah. Donna, I think your budget's fine. I don't know what we'd talk about in here.
Yeah, we're sure of it.
Either one of them.
It's minus, yeah, I mean, it's services to people. I mean, anyways, yeah, we gotta get rid of, we're talking little things. I mean, more, not more than four thousand, and I'm willing to contribute whatever is to the cause.
We wanna go to, I mean, Ambulance has its own levy, so I don't know if there's anything to do there.
That's what the voter voted on, and he's within his levy, so...
Yeah. Um, attorney, you wanna go through that one, or we already talked about highlights there?
Even conservation, we cut their budget.
We just limited it on the tax side. We didn't cut...
Well, we, we cut that down.
Yeah. You going to conservation now, Roger?
Well, we already did that once, we went through that.
No, I mean, is that where you're at, or?
Yeah. Then I'm at courthouse. Then I'm at courthouse. That was twenty thousand dollars, I can't do this.
I can give you some back on courthouse if you want it.
What's that?
You can take the building repair and maintenance down to thirty thousand. You can take the ground improvement down to fifteen thousand. And you can take the building improvement down to thirty thousand and leave that contingent to the homeowner. Just in case something big was to happen.
Let's start over, a little slower at the beginning. Building.
Building repair and maintenance, take it down to thirty thousand.
And that's line fifty-one or, yeah, four, four forty-one, fifty-one, yep. Okay.
Four eighty-three fifty-one, take it down to fifteen thousand.
Okay.
Six ten fifty-one, take it down to thirty thousand.
Okay.
That's what I got on that.
Fifty, fifty-six thousand.
Uh, thirty fifteen and thirty.
That was fifty-six thousand.
Hmm.
I got thirty-six.
I'd have thirty-six too.
You took it down to thirty, not not thirty thousand.
Yeah, ten, six, and yeah. Thirty-six. And this is where our insurance is up thirty percent. Can't do anything about that. Anything else for courthouse? Ain't much there. Custodians, got anything else for that?
We've already cut that down. I mean, I didn't raise them. We're down nineteen percent on institutional supplies, so. You ran out of toilet paper, you're really gonna have some problems.
Yep.
Do the, do the school thing. Do the school thing and have everybody bring in something.
Yeah.
We're not flushing, because we're not having that problem either.
Okay, just magazine.
Disposable.
This line item I don't think I need by mistake, so we can
I mean, Derek and I just visited, it's nothing, it's not gonna help you, but that that processing is ideal.
We already did that.
Did you take that?
Yeah, we already did. I don't know what topic you're talking about. Sorry.
That's what you're talking about.
Sorry.
No, that's
So take that as your.
So on IT, contingency, we have to get rid of that again, it's ten thousand.
Getting rid of contingencies doesn't help us.
Well, this one right here, you can drop by five thousand. So that was supposed to be there.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah, Derek's not paying anything, it's a legislator.
So.
He doesn't like that thing anyways. So this one's dropping by five thousand.
Can I see that so I can do that right?
Yep, that's what.
Okay, that'll help someone.
Do you have anything else, just uh just.
Do you wanna be nice?
Yeah.
I just have one line item. GIS. Put the bottom there, just for a point, that's five thousand dollars.
Can you say?
Eliminate it?
Yes.
Which one, I'm sorry?
First, first page, GIS.
Four 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 nine two one nine.
Yep.
Five thousand, so it's still one million.
Make it zero?
Yes.
Okay. In mine, um auditor. I know, sorry. Under, under other help, one oh three oh two, I took that out, we'll make it work.
Okay.
Okay, what line item was that?
Um, the
One oh three oh two. Fourth line from the top, first page.
The other help for elections, take we'll make do.
Wait, by the age, you wanna go to the annex?
Sure. That's close. What you got there, Billy?
The building repair and maintenance, we cut another fifteen hundred out of that.
Four four one six six.
Correct.
So we're going to forty-five hundred?
Down to forty-five hundred, yeah.
What are you on?
No. This is on that. I'll still on that, where you wanna go ahead?
Oh.
You did, you audited it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Conservation, four thousand.
What about civil defense? I've heard that how many times, but.
They do their own budgets, so.
Yeah, it's like.
We've already cut that one.
Yeah, conservation. We already talked about some. Anything else you guys wanna add?
Merchandise.
Courthouse, we did, custodians.
Conservation. Line one three twenty-two, other help, is that part-time, summer help, or is that on?
What line are you in, or what page?
The page two.
Yeah, a lot of his stuff has changed because his budget, you're talking conservation, right?
Yeah.
So let me look, what's that line item number?
One zero three twenty-two. Maintenance and operation, other help, is that like part-time, summer?
They hire different people in the summertime to do that.
It's the same as last year, nineteen one forty. He went back to the same as last year.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, that'd be a part-time person, because they had two percent figured in this sheet, so that's a position. And it's only partially used because of the half-season.
You know, that was the talking point of.
No. Anything else there or move on?
Come on, be a processing.
Derek already came up and dropped the second line, five thousand. Won't have that part-time help. That's one oh three fifty-two twenty.
That's five thousand?
Yep.
So that gives one hundred and thirty-five.
Yeah, and change. You already got that in, right?
Yeah.
Cause that's what we see in our papers, but if that's.
No, that's, that's what we got.
What?
It's one, the one forty.
In what department?
Eight fifteen, yeah, data processing.
Which is what number?
Fifty-two.
Cause what we see in here is what the way changes.
One.
So what line in?
One oh three fifty-two twenty.
Yep, I have one three three four ninety.
One three three four ninety, okay.
So then we drop it down to one.
Did you reduce that five thousand already, right?
One thirty-three four ninety is after the five thousand.
Yeah. I'm like, yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can get some more water.
I have a couple lines I can reduce, I mean, if you're at a point.
You can always flip there.
Pardon? Which, which one?
Well, it's general one.
Treasure.
Treasure.
Um, I mean, I can reduce supplies, I have supplies for tax, supplies for motor vehicle. I can reduce each one of those at twenty-five hundred. And then reduce meeting mileage expense, five hundred in both departments. Has that uh budget amendment, is that reflecting on this? The budget we're working on now for revenues that we talked about earlier?
The budget amendment that we've done this year?
Yeah, for revenues for, I mean I I was gonna change my revenue budget that we're on right now. So, I mean.
No, we haven't added any revenues.
We had some.
Yeah, yeah, seventy-five or eight, twenty-five hundred dollars out of each supplies. So three of supply line, and then five hundred dollars out of meeting mileage.
Yeah, each, both departments, five hundred out of tax, five hundred out of motor vehicle.
Oh.
Yeah.
So eighty-five hundred dollars total.
So it's four thousand dollars total, right? Four thousand total, right, Nick?
I, yeah, yeah.
Four thousand total?
Yeah, supplies fifteen hundred in motor vehicle, supplies fifteen hundred in treasures, and then meeting mileage five hundred in one department, five hundred in the other department.
I'm sorry, did you say fifteen hundred out of both supply? I, I, did I say fifteen?
You said five hundred out of each side.
I don't.
Meeting mileage, meeting mileage.
But I thought supplies, did I say fifteen hundred?
I thought you said twenty-five hundred.
I thought twenty-five, I thought you said twenty, okay.
Twenty-five hundred out of each.
Out of each one.
Sorry, misheard.
For three line items of supplies, right?
No, two.
Two.
Two line items of supplies, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Line item and tax.
So then five thousand or six thousand total.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Can't change options.
Almost twenty thousand total.
Your car must not own here.
Mine?
Yeah, they don't have much interest.
No, he doesn't.
Getting ready to talk about that, man, that's just gonna bring all the ass when you get to that part.
What do you got for your car?
Well, again, if we eliminate that service of transporter. Okay. Then you can cut out twenty-five hundred there. Which will also have a tertiary effect of removing the drivers, which is another two K. So you can eliminate those two lines.
A.
Looking at what I've been able to execute for the uh data processing. I can probably get back two K on that still. And then they can also reduce uh general services variable by two K.
And then they can also reduce, uh, general services burial by two K. So the line numbers specifically that I'm talking about. From the first page, one oh three twenty-one fourteen. That's the VA drivers. Page two, three nine zero two one. Going from four to two. Go on page two, six thirty-two twenty-one data processing, reduce that by two K. And then the last item, six thirty-five twenty-one, uh, twenty-five hundred on the car, reduce that.
Reduce it?
Essentially, I guess, won't transport next year.
Reduce it to twenty-five hundred or reduce it by?
Two point five, twenty-five.
It is twenty-five now.
Right.
So reduce it to zero?
Take it out completely?
Well.
That's a human people line item in there.
I'm just saying the service of transporting veterans, if we take the car away, there's no sense in keeping the drivers, okay? So I mean, that's all kind of a tertiary effect for some of those lines. If we had to have effective one July, I've got some reaction time to inform the veterans. At least for right now, we've suspended that service. And we won't be transporting that.
I don't, I don't know that that's. Service to cut for.
I'm just throwing it out as an option.
Couple thousand.
I mean it's. With what I've articulated, we've got two, four, six. Eighty-five hundred dollars it cuts out of my budget of those items.
Derek, do you take care of his data processing?
I think so, I don't know what would be in there.
She's, he has.
Is that still that copy machine?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the copy machine, okay.
That's for office supplies?
Okay, cause it's under data processing.
Yeah, it's listed data processing.
They, they get charged a maintenance contract for services support and paper or usage on that. I don't know where that's being put, but that's probably.
Forty sixty a month?
Yeah, so six hundred a year or so between the two departments there, so.
He's got budgeted thirty-nine hundred, is that for something else too Dan?
Well, at the time, that was for the replacement of that copier when I was told. He wanted me to keep it, and I was told, well, yeah, we bought it, it's ours.
Yeah, that was actually we did those.
I'm not anticipating that expense of having to get another copier slash scanner. So that can be reduced.
Yeah, we don't plan on replacing that copy machine, maybe it has fifty thousand pages on it.
Yeah, it's got a lot of life left in it, so.
So do you think we could reduce that to a thousand or do you wanna?
IT has been paying for desktops, laptops, monitors, keyboards, mice, network cables, video cables, all that stuff that would normally be.
We're at eleven hundred.
My department's scheduled for replacement, I know you had talked about that.
Yeah, I think we have, we're down to above six machines left, I think you have one.
Two thousand, two thousand should be okay, we're at eleven hundred already, so even when these papers are printed in February. So, I wouldn't go down to a thousand.
Do you want it at nineteen hundred, is that what you said Dan?
I like to leave it at nineteen hundred, give back two thousand.
Okay. Are we leaving the other ones the same?
You can, you think we could reduce burial without, that wouldn't impact anything?
Pardon?
We could reduce burial, you think?
I recommend it just taken and reducing it from four to two.
Yeah.
That will allow me to have one burial should that arise. Under the I have code, the county has to fund, uh, individual burial, so it has to be something in there. That two thousand dollar figure I'm basing on a service connected to that. Uh, no different than what the VA does, they pay two thousand, we pay two thousand, that's. Pre-names type situation, I'm probably looking at eighteen hundred dollars to two thousand. Yeah, it's set up for two body burials in a fiscal year, or two pre-names in a fiscal year, so.
Yeah.
We just reduce it from two to one.
Are you talking, you didn't have?
I, I think the other stuff should be left for now.
So you're just talking burial and IT and not the other stuff?
For now.
Okay.
You're eradicated, you're the only one after that.
It should, yeah.
Does revenue, is that in your equation? Cause I know Nick and I were talking, we got some additional revenue that you could probably list, which may happen in some months. This, this is for the next year, I was talking about the year right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That would, even this year, that would help.
It'll still help, it's just. It's not on paper right now, so we can just have that in back of our head, but yeah, it will help.
Okay, cause I think you could probably, mine, I need to talk about it when we met back before it didn't change from fifteen to twenty-five. For the, uh, collections that we do. Uh, that we get, that I think, that's a, that's a fair assessment what we do now, and I anticipate. But I don't know when that staff person is going to be on board with it. But I think we could raise that. And then. We'll have to have a separate line item, I suppose, add it, add it for. A reversible or something like that.
Anywhere else you guys wanna go? Departments of vice, what do you wanna do next?
Here we are, weed commission, there's nothing there. Put the weed through.
Treats grab.
So right now, are you talking threshold collection fees?
Yeah, that threshold collection is at fifteen, and that's where it's been, but as you can see the history, it's been at least twenty-five thousand or more.
Okay, I can increase that for next year, what?
Yeah, I think that would be.
Twenty, did you say twenty?
Right now, if you look at where I, well, this is printed in February.
Yeah.
We're at thirteen.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I have mine printed in March, and it was at eighteen.
Okay.
So twenty-five, except.
Yeah, I think so. If it, it helps with your equation.
Yeah, it does.
It does.
What was the projected extra revenue from Nick?
I'm talking about, I was talking about the budget we're on right now.
Right, but in the coming budget though?
Like?
That, it's gonna be more, actually more than what I budgeted. For, for interest income, I think I talked to you guys about that.
Yeah.
So I think we're on track with that yet at, at, uh, uh, probably a half million, so. It's about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars more than I just did.
Right.
Which will help our ending of balance to the end of this year.
What percentage of that is, uh, from the insurance fund and what?
That's general basic.
That's general basic. Do we have that in the budget, five hundred thousand?
No, we didn't.
Cause that's in this budget year.
Yeah.
So we?
But we had a five hundred thousand dollar budget amendment that we weren't planning on too, so.
I don't know, but what about next year's budget, can we plan on?
That one I did in budget five hundred thousand. Yeah, I think I did three hundred.
Yeah, I think we did three.
What we've got so far. What I've added up here is we got seventy thousand five hundred dollars in the expenses cut and. Potentially three hundred and ten thousand of extra revenue between treasurer and attorney's office. That was, you know, more than maybe planned on.
I'm sorry, I was looking at.
I, I was saying, just from what I've added up here, from all the expenses that have been talked about, cutting. We're at seventy thousand five hundred dollars. And extra revenues for the coming year, we're looking at three hundred and ten thousand between your office and, and Todd's office. That's what I have. Which.
But, I mean, that three hundred thousand is the budget we're talking about right now, you guys had that as anticipated. Income for this next fiscal year.
Right, okay, yeah, I see what you're saying. So then we're talking eighty thousand five hundred. Combined between the expenses cut and the extra revenue from the attorney's office. For the diff, for a difference in, in what we're talking about. So far.
Yeah. Anything else?
Yes.
Or another department to go to?
That number's already down to two hundred. Okay.
Yeah. Right, yeah. The, this is pretty much gone, and that's increased a little bit to stay in compliance.
Correct.
How about the thirty thousand for the fairgrounds? And five thousand for matching funds for the gate? They haven't done anything with the repair money for. The last several years because of trying to hold it for the grandstands, but they haven't actually used any of it. I think we can. Look at addressing the grandstand a separate thing, I don't think, I don't know that. Thirty thousand is gonna go very far towards that, so. And I do have another idea that that could be encompassed in, but that's not a today topic. Got any thoughts on that?
I don't know, you take that thirty thousand away, there goes the hope for them to be able to do anything with the grandstands and.
No, no, I don't.
We'd have to be contributing for a lot of years for that money to be.
There's.
Cause they're talking a couple million.
One point seven.
Yeah, that's a piece of that puzzle.
No, it's not.
There's some other things we can do to.
The.
To look, to look at, potentially.
Did you change anything else while I was?
No.
You're talking fair.
Yeah. I think we could take that out for now. Always reevaluate it next year, but. I'd leave the five thousand for the gate, so it's free admission yet, but take the thirty thousand out.
Lot of people use it during.
I think there's other ways we could contribute that way. I've got an idea I've been working on, but it's not ready for discussion right now.
That's a fair assumption, that's a lot of people in the county take advantage of. They're always gonna have a hard time keeping the bill due, so.
I think the point is, if we're leaving the five thousand for free gate admission. And the thirty thousand, they're not applying to the fair itself. Right now, they're saving it for the grandstands. So it's, it won't affect the fair this year as far as the function of the fair. But we can, we can consider it at least.
So leave it in for now?
I don't know, what do you guys?
I might consider taking it out, but.
I, I would be comfortable taking it out, but I've also got other ideas in the works, I'm just not ready with that yet, so. But. I, I think we can support them in other ways. And support the fair.
I disagree with Ted's point.
Kind of split. And we'll leave it.
Okay.
What'd you say?
Just leave it then.
Okay.
There's not much else discretionary.
Rest of them are. Like Elder Bridge and that kind of stuff, that's all. Yeah, that's, that's all stuff we have to contribute to. Isaac and Nyco and stuff.
Any other thoughts there?
We don't have a lot of discretionary money.
No. I think the only one we haven't really. Talked specifically now was secondary roads, we talked a couple things previously. I don't know.
Doug, you mentioned that not painting edge lines through the, for a fiscal year is approximately a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
Is that correct? I think that would be something that is a first place to. To reduce service if you're gonna do something in that list of things.
Are we going to reduce the transfers for that same amount then? That's the only way to, that's the only, the only way to make an impact on. The general rural local option sale tag, whatever. Is reducing transfers, same token.
I'm, I'm to the point where I. My projected balance at the end of this coming fiscal year is gonna be so low. That if you guys, I mean, you guys can choose not to transfer any money, but if we have.
that if you guys, I mean, you guys can choose not to transfer any money, but if we have advance, the question's gonna be, do we respond to them? When you, when you're talking about ten million dollar budget and you have a hundred thousand dollar balance, that's difficult. That's difficult. And I don't even know every year, sometimes I don't get all the transfers that are budgeted. Sometimes I've not received all of them.
Then if our fund balance is gonna be that low, maybe we need to look at not purchasing some of the equipment that's planned yet for this year.
That's fine, when it stops running, we will just park it, and we will not be using that equipment to provide the service, there's need. I mean, and if the board, if that's what the board chooses, please allow, please tell me that. Because when I get a phone call, somebody's road is not being maintained, and I say, or the snow roof is not being removed, and I say, I'm sorry, we are not replacing equipment, the board has instructed me that. I won't, I do want to say, the board has told me to do that. I mean, we can, we can stop maintaining things. I, I don't, I don't think that's a good idea. And again, it comes down to what service do you want? You gotta prioritize. Say in a general statement, we'll just get rid of the equipment, if that's what you want, Kyle, we, we have equipment that's right now borderline on whether it should be run or not. But please tell me. And I, and I prefer to have it in amendments too. The motion by, sent by to stop purchasing equipment in the secondary road department. I don't want to be blamed for it. What do you need, Kyle?
Nothing.
Okay. New equipment's one million dollars in the proposed budget.
And even a million dollars is a lot less than we need.
Yeah, there was an email back two months ago, talking about trying to get caught up in our rotation of equipment. If we have, we have three loaders right now that we use to load our trucks with. If those are not replaced, I don't know if we, how we get the gravel out of the stockpile. Hire a, hire a contractor? Rent, lease it?
Any other ideas or solutions to changes in the budget?
I just want to, currently, right now, I think it's over seventeen percent that the secondary road budget, proposed secondary road budget is less, seventeen, over seventeen percent than what the current budget is. It's difficult to operate on seventeen percent less.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn if there's no other suggestions for changes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Can I ask a question before?
Yeah, go ahead.
So what about this budget, is this it, is this the end, what?
Are you going to adapt the changes that we talked about, or gotta give Tammy some direction?
Oh, she's been making changes as it's gone.
Changes as we've been going.
Is that what we want?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, is this?
There's a motion on the floor to adjourn.
Is this it? The, I'm sorry, I just don't know where to go, so.
Before you adjourn, you should make a motion to adopt the changes as we've been regarding.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, so that needs to be addressed first.
I'll withdraw my motion. He withdrew his second.
Okay. I would entertain a motion in regard to anything with the budget.
Then, I think that's eighty thousand five hundred dollars total change in, in the budget, I think is what we made, seventy thousand five hundred of that was expenses cut, ten thousand was income. That's what I have. And thank you all for coming up with some solutions there too.
I guess my question would be, then that's only a tenth of what you need, what are you gonna do for the other ninety percent?
That's less than a tenth.
Okay, sure, let's get technical about it, but.
You want the levy amount left at two and a quarter, or what do you want?
It's gonna change the tax asking, is that what you're trying to say?
Well, I'm trying to figure out what you're gonna do.
We're not, we're not changing a whole lot.
We're not changing the tax asking, I don't think. It's not been moved, needle?
No, that doesn't.
Only to help the fund balance by a small margin, a very small margin.
Did you make the motion, Carter?
I did not. Are we going to direct Doug to cut any services in the secondary road fund from different departments? But if, if we're going to limit transfers, then to I guess, I fully agree, because budgets already been cut a lot. I'm sure it's very difficult to manage that. I don't think we can, because if you start cutting services, it's gonna cost that much more to bring the services back up when we do start worrying about that again.
I have one question, and I'm not suggesting this by any means, and I'm not saying it's the way to go, but I'm just wondering if you guys have talked about it, is it wise, given the state of affairs we're in right now, to be owners of farm real estate? I don't know.
It generates net revenue, and if we sold it, it'd stand with the lease that's on it, so.
And that's, that's, again, I'm not suggesting, I'm just wondering if you guys have discussed that, because it's a hundred and sixty acres, I think, is that right?
Two hundred and twenty.
Yeah, it's more than that.
It's a short two forty.
So I'm, I'm just wondering, I, yeah.
It would be a short.
Guys wanted suggestions, so I just brought that up, it was something that I was, I was thinking, and that's why this decision happened, and that's up to you guys.
Short-term solution to a big problem.
Agreed, agreed. A decision, though, that hundreds of thousands of people out there in, in the world have to make in tough times.
Yeah.
I think people have worked hard and made some recommendations for changes, and I would suggest that we accomplish, or accommodate that with a motion to approve what Paige just did. Which was what we figured was, should have moved that.
To have Tammy put those in the budget, as she already has.
Without those changes.
Formally. Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. I guess my only question is, is this all we're doing, or is there more?
I've been sitting here all day, that's, this is all we've come up with.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion?
And I'm leaving the levy at two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Yes.
You have notes on that motion? Roll call vote, please.
Jerks.
Yes.
Whacker.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes.
Stacker.
No, motion carries. Anything further, otherwise would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call vote whenever you're ready.
Jerks.
Yes.
Whacker.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes.
Stacker.
No, motion carries. Four, or three twenty-three, we are adjourned.
Thank you guys for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Whacker, can you tell me the amounts, you said again, seventy?
Seventy thousand five hundred in expenses cut.
Expenses, and?
Ten thousand in revenue.